Computer was fixed. Evidently, it's not. For the IP guys. Oh, you got a second?
Yeah, no, okay. I also wonder if when I used to move over in Meadows. And the property used to rest of us along the waste ditch. And there were some people who. I thought it was a property, but in landscaping rock and stuff, an access to a little creek and things like that.
Well, I'll let it sit here.
And they can't remember this actually was a property within Eastman, but I think it was actually a city property. So there will be other places.
Find here at least for now, probably the rest of the meeting. So we all ready? All right, let's go ahead and get started with our Lehigh City Council meeting. Like to welcome everybody to the regular session. It is seven oh five. Sorry for a little bit of a late start. But it is July twenty third, twenty twenty four, day before Pioneer Day here in the state and. We're being treated with a fairly short agenda tonight. So that's. That's good news for us because that doesn't happen very often. It's good news for those who are here waiting for the last item to come up. I have asked Paige if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You do that, Paige? Thank you, Paige. Okay. We always allow. Twenty minutes for citizen input. Tisha, if we can get our signup sheets, are they? Okay, well, for right now, let's start our, let's start our citizen input. This is an opportunity for people who. Want to address the council or the administrative staff on something you see going on in Lehigh City. You think we need to. Give some attention to. We don't have eyes everywhere in the city and. The public is our eyes. So if you see something we can. We can address, we can certainly and will look into it and see what we can do. We do ask if you're, you're here to comment on something that's on the agenda later tonight. If you'll wait till that agenda item comes up, that's probably the best time to. To comment. We do ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, if you would. And give us. In order to come on our comment, you have to come up to the podium, state your name. Also, please let us know where you live too. That helps so. Because we do have some public comments later on tonight, and. If you're going to issue a comment in regards to the school district, we really do want to know, you know, where you're from. So. That being said, is there anyone here tonight who would like to make public comment? Okay, yeah, come on up.
My name is Chris Brown. I live at two seven five eight North thirty four eighty West Lehigh in the Holbrook Farms subdivision. I thought. Hard before I came here tonight and. I was not going to come here because. I've come here many times and sometimes I think. The council and mayor have listened. Other times I think you have blown me off, quite frankly. And I think so. In your introduction here, Mayor, you said, you know, if there's something you don't have eyes on everything in the city, which you guys don't understand. But you had something two, three years ago, and it was the design of the Holbrook Farms Park. Okay. I'm not going to go back into the minutia of saying, oh, it's on the planning commission. The bottom line is. I have never seen a park worse than the Holbrook Farms Park and the city should be. Very displeased with the performance of the contractor that designed it. And constructed it. I'm not going to argue if it was the designer or the constructor because I was not out there twenty four hours a day. I went by once a month. Because that's how long it took for construction to happen and it's probably not finished. And I'm specifically referring to. The last minute change to want to do native grasses. And. Coming home from church with my son and my wife, my son said, yeah, there's the park. And my wife said, yeah, there's park, looks like a good playground, and it does look fun. And then my wife and I would kind of mumble and say, yeah, look at that native grass. And I said, yeah, look at that. And I said, I'm not going to worry about it, but. I thought about today at work. I am going to worry about it to the point where I'm just going to come here and address it. You all got emails from me. When the design was submitted and reviewed by everybody. Leave it up to you if you want to review it. I'm going to leave it on your conscience. Also, if you want to make a decision. And I don't, someone gone out there and mowed those native grasses out there. And if that was city or the developer, I don't know who. And if it's the intent of the city as well as the developer, if the city has accepted ownership of that place. Shame on you guys, but if you haven't, great. But hopefully during the walk down final punch list. If. They say that's native grass, and I think they're saying that it's native grass. Then I suggest you look at my email. I asked for a quality assurance plan, not just for the civil engineering. But also of the landscaping, specifically the seed mixture. That seed is not native grass. That seed is weeds from the side of I fifteen. Heck, you don't put some better grass than what's there. So. That's all I have to say. Off to you guys.
Thank you. All right, let me just ask a question. How long was that planted? Stevie, you can answer that because I know. Family Park has a similar issue, but it's.
Can I answer a couple?
Yeah, it's going to take a while for.
Yeah, so realistically, native grass, we have not accepted ownership of, of the completion of the park yet. The native grass does need to be revegetated again. And it will take about three years for it to turn into it. If you do go out to Holbrook Farms, some of the side areas that we have got. Two and a half years ago have finally been able to get sprayed and get some of the thistle and some of the broadleaf out of them. And I'm sure that's what you're talking about on a lot of it is, is it is, it looks very rough, especially on some of the native areas. So, yeah.
Yeah, because I noticed that at the family park with a lot of that. You know, you do have some weed mix in with this grass seed.
Oh, it's, well, it's not. It's not weed mix. It is, it is native grasses. It is the same standard as a lot of different places around the state. If you go out to Daybreak right now. Those are the grasses that we used at Holbrook Farms. They're beautiful. So, yeah, thanks.
Yes.
Sorry, Steve, but. Um, I've also heard some concerns possibly about the play structure. Is there?
Um, actually, I just addressed one of those during the break. Realistically, what the play structure is, is a climber. Of course, it's like everything else. All the little kids want to do what the big kids are doing. Playgrounds have age restrictions from. A limit of five to twelve and then anyway, three to five and five to twelve, I believe is what it is. Don't quote me. And that is the older age group is the large play structure. The smaller ones there will be on the sides. There do need to be some signs installed stating, hey, be careful. This is a large playground. So, yeah.
Was that selected by the developer or by the?
Uh, it was. I'm going to say we did see it. We saw the original one that came back out of budget and then we didn't see it as well the second time. So.
And when are we anticipated to take over ownership?
Uh, they want to do a grand opening Labor Day.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Yeah, real quick, yeah.
That play structure. Is dangerous. I would suggest you look, getting your attorneys out there, look at it and see if their attorney kids would like to play. Because they have the exact same one over the Highland All Abilities Play Park and. They, it's the exact same thing. And it, my five year old, who's five now, wanted to go up there and. It's a climbing rope thing and it almost becomes vertical. And so one, I haven't done it over here, but it's the exact same thing. But over in Highland, I tried to do it with them. And I scared myself. Because I was holding a five year old, but I think, I think it needs to be revisited. I would suggest taking a harder look at it and, you know, you can put signs up there to age limits and stuff. But you can always have those curious kids that are five to seven that weigh twenty, fifty pounds, if that, thirty pounds, that's going to try it and. Yeah, I hate to see something hap- happen there. Anyway, just thoughts.
All right, thank you. Other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section. That brings us to item three, which is the consent agenda. And there's three items. Three point one is approval of the city council city minutes. Item three point two is approval of the purchase orders and item three point three is approval of the surplus items. Counsel, do you have, is there anyone who has questions on the three things that are on this consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a motion on item number three.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Paul to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Paige. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes as item four has been pulled. Item five is consideration of resolution twenty twenty four dash forty two that's approving an agreement. With ICE America for the construction of a temporary ice rink.
Um, yeah, we went out to, we extended the contract from last year with the vendor. They were great to work with. Everything went well. So, yeah, any questions on it?
So it's going to be bigger this year.
So yes, it's going to be half the size of a hockey rink this year. We are kind of bound by some power limitations to where we can put this. Because we have to rent chillers and tie into existing power. So we will be adding a second chiller. It's a smaller one. But it is quite a bit bigger and we learned a lot of lessons last year, so it should be a lot better.
A lot of fun and very popular.
Yeah, it was.
Now, so you have any questions? Looking forward to it. For what it's worth, I never fell down last year on the ice, so. What happens when there's handrails around the ice rinks? Okay, counsel, I'll look for a motion on item number five.
That we approve resolution. Number twenty twenty four dash forty one, approving an agreement with ICE America with the construction of a temporary ice rink as presented here.
Dash forty two.
Yes, that one.
Forty two, six and five, so is it forty one?
Oh, you're right. Which one is this? Which is correct here?
My vote, it's, if you open it up, it's forty one, Paige.
You were right then.
Well, no, I was wrong, but I had a good reason. So, so amended to forty one, twenty twenty four dash forty one.
Uh, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Heather. Motion was made by Paige. Any questions on that motion? This is by resolution, so we will go roll call vote. I'll start with Michelle.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
And Paige.
Yes.
That passes. Item six is consideration of resolution twenty twenty four dash forty two.
Mayor, sorry, Chris just joined. If you want to acknowledge that he's.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. So our council member Condi has joined us. Virtually, and so we'll be calling for his vote also on these items. So I'll start reading item six again as consideration of resolution twenty twenty four dash forty two, this approving an agreement with Quicksilver Concrete. For concrete removal and replacement services. Yeah, BJ. Come up and tell us what we're doing here.
Yeah, Quicksilver, we put out a competitive bid process. Quicksilver won the bid. So it's a two year contract with some options for extensions later on if they meet our requirements. So that's what it is.
Counsel, do you have any questions? How many people do you have bid?
Uh, six the first go around, then four the second go around.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a pretty good sampling.
Yep. So.
Mayor, do you have a question?
Yes.
I didn't see a dollar amount on there. Do you remember what it was?
We actually, so our concrete budget this year is seven fifty. In, in the past, we've like specified that amount, but in a particular instance like this. Steve is using Quicksilver two for some of their stuff down around their buildings. So we didn't specify a number. So that they can use them in different parts too, like if the, if the water department needed them or, or anybody else. So it's. We won't use the full seven fifty towards them. We'll use that with several different contractors and different projects like concrete grinding or something like that. But I imagine we'll probably be in the four hundred, four fifty ballpark.
Is this mostly for sidewalk repair?
Both, new, any new sidewalk goes in or, or removal and replacement of trip hazards. Yep.
Okay, good. Thanks, BJ. Counsel. I'll take a motion on item number six.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty four dash forty two, approving an agreement with Quicksilver Concrete for concrete removal and replacement services.
Motion to approve by Heather. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
And a second by Paul. Any questions on that motion as stated? Hearing none, this is also resolution, so I will start the voting with Heather.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Paige.
Yes.
And Michelle.
Yes.
And Chris.
Yes.
I have to remind you more than once.
It's on here.
Okay, that's good. Item seven is consideration of resolution twenty twenty four dash forty three, approving an agreement with Park and Tennis Courts. Um, for the construction of pickleball courts at Shadow Ridge Park. Steve?
Should be Shadow Ridge Park.
I was wondering when we'd build that, right?
I didn't know.
So again, we went.
Maybe that was the bicycle park.
We went out to competitive bid again. This is, you're going to see a lot for Shadow Ridge. This is what happens when we try and help with the budget and do things a little bit in house and. Outsource it a little bit. So these. This was actually an interesting bid. This is actually a post tension court, which usually costs more. But with the surfacing and the flatwork, we got bids for both and this one came back better and. The reputation of the company was great as well. So, yeah.
Leisure Villas down on center.
Right. And as I, as far as I know, there's not been any problem. That's good stuff. Both the tennis court and the pickleball courts were out post standing tension. So as they're during the construction, so it was kind of fun to see how that all went together.
Kind of need to process.
Yep. Questions?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Steve.
Oh, you're good.
Is. Am I right in thinking that impact fees are going to pay for this?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
It's part of the impact fees for that park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? I'll take a motion for item number seven.
Mayor, I note that we approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash forty three, approving an agreement with Park and Tennis Courts for the construction of pickleball courts at Shadow Ridge. It's Shadow Ridge Park.
I have a motion. By Paige, do I have a second? And a second by Heather. Any questions on that motion? I'm going to start with Chris so I don't forget him.
What?
I hear yes. Okay. Uh, Heather.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Paige.
Yes.
And Michelle.
Yes.
Okay. Item eight is consideration of plat amendment approval for the Gardner Point Phase Five Plat Amendment. This relocating a P U E. Located approximately at eleven eighty North, thirty nine sixty West. Edge Holmes is the applicant. Who's here from Edge Holmes? Come on up.
My name's Ben Duzette with Focus Engineering. I'm representing Edge tonight. Yeah, this was a. I have an interesting. Issue that, that we encountered when the buildings were being constructed in Gardner Point. And there was issue with, with some footings and, and ultimately working with the power department and with the plant department and we all. Met together and came with the best solution to. Not have to tear out buildings. And we're able to get with this, this plot amendment to relocate this, this P U E in coordination with Lehigh Power. So it's. A pretty small amendment, but, but important for. For keeping the. The buildings and not having to tear a bunch of buildings out unnecessarily. So.
They were off about two feet. Is that correct?
Yep.
Any questions for the applicant? While you have a seat, is there any public comment on this tonight? This is a. Plat amendment. Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back up here, counsel. Uh, any questions for staff? I'll take a motion. From somebody on the council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consideration of plat amendment, approval for the Gardner Point Phase Five Plat Amendment. Relocating the P U E located at approximately eleven eighty North, thirty nine sixty West and include all D R C comments.
I have a motion to approve by Heather. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Paige. Any questions on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, that passes. There you go. Item nine is consideration ordinance forty four twenty twenty four, approval of the Thanksgiving Point area plan amendment to allow automotive repair. As a permitted use in a commercial zone. Mike Ballard is the applicant. Come on up. Tell us what you're doing here.
Sure. I'm John Madsen. I'm Mike Ballard's friend. He couldn't make it.
And you used to be his friend.
Yeah. And, um, basically he owns the wash barn over there in Thanksgiving Point and. He's looking to sell it, but he's trying to sell it in a way that he can have an automotive. Place. And so the general plan was amended to include automotive. And there's been meetings by the D R C and the planning commission. I believe they've both. Reviewed it and I think it's been approved. And so he's rather than waiting for the big whole Thanksgiving Point thing to go through. He wants to just focus on his little, little thing because. His sale is, he needs to do it faster. So that's what he's been working on. So.
Let me ask Kim. I guess, because there are some conditional uses with auto repair business, right?
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember, I can look it up, whether they're proposing it as permitted or conditional. I think it's conditional.
Yeah, I think my question is, is just make sure that the applicant was aware of all, you know, what is conditional and what, yeah.
Yeah, there could be conditions imposed on hours of operation, lighting.
I think he is aware of that and so is the potential purchaser. Because it's under the, the proposed general plan, so they looked at all of that.
Yeah, yeah, they did match what was approved in the new Thanksgiving Point area plan of it. Since it hasn't been finalized, they, they have to bring this through separately. They're, they've been waiting, hoping that that new plan would be recorded, but we don't know how much longer that'll be. So, but this will match the new table, so it'll be consistent.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Uh, counsel, I'll take a motion on item number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance forty four dash twenty twenty four. Approval of Thanksgiving Point area plan amendment to allow automotive repairs permitted use in the commercial zone and include all of the. D R C comments. Are there any?
Planning Commission.
Yeah, planning commission comments then.
Okay, motion to approve by Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Heather. Any questions on the motion as stated?
I do. So we're. We're moving that it's a permitted use versus a conditional use.
They're adding it to the table. Right now it's not allowed under the current area plan, so we're adding it to the table as a conditional use.
Okay. On our agenda and in his motion, he said permitted use.
Oh, it's conditional. Okay, so.
Change it to condition.
Yes, change the, my motion to conditional. It's, it's in the agenda, it's written as permitted. So appreciate you catching that.
Yeah.
You better double check that.
Sure.
Yeah.
It actually is permitted. So I was misspoken earlier. So they're, they're proposing that it be a permitted use, not conditional.
Okay.
Glad we checked.
Second stands. Okay, any other questions? Okay, uh, we'll start with Paige.
Yeah.
Chris.
Yes.
Uh, Michelle.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
And Paul.
Yes.
Thank you. Glad we had that clarification.
Little back and forth.
All right.
I thought Mac was getting up to leave right again. I thought he was here for the automotive repair. I was surprised.
All right, well, now we have one main item on our agenda and that's for the public hearing for the creation of the school district. And I'm pretty sure that, and I was pretty sure since the. People who came tonight probably wanted, were more interested in this than they were the wash barn turning into a mechanic shop. But. That being said, uh, we're going to open this public hearing. Uh, we know there's a, a lot of emotion here. This is our second public hearing. The first hearing was very, very polite. Yeah, that's very good, very encouraging. And so we, we anticipate that we'll see that again tonight. Uh, you're welcome to come up to the podium. Once again, as mentioned earlier, we want you to state your name and please tell us where you're at. And it's okay. Uh, this is any, if you're inside the interlocal, even outside the interlocal, you have the right to come up and comment. We'd just like to know where you're coming from. Because it's of interest to us. And, uh, we're having people from Lehigh speak in some of the other meetings and that's okay. So we got a sign in sheet here too, if you'll fill it up. So. Come on up. Back even though when we know who you are, we're going to make you put your name on there, right? So you can sign up afterwards if you want to come up and, and comment.
I just wanted to meet Mac. My name's Julie King. I reside at eighteen sixty four North Peppermint Place in Saratoga Springs. I am here just to show my support for the central interlocal. Um, I am in an area where the west side is pursuing an interlocal. I just want to express to. Counsel and the mayor how much I appreciate the collaborative experience that it's been. Um, and just have kudos to all of you for making. It such a great experience of what local government looks like. So I just wanted to express my gratitude to all of you for that. And just to also express my commitment long term. To making sure that we're taking care of all of our employees and all of our students regardless of where lines are drawn and what comes out of potential votes in November. So to make that, that commitment to all of you personally, um, like I said, I've been really impressed with the collaboration that's gone on. I hope that continues long term. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that I communicated that I think we're all very focused on doing what's best for kids and our employees long term. And I think that the more that we work together, the better results that we'll have. And I just want to express to you my appreciation and my commitment that I intend. To keep working with all of you so that we can take care of all of our people. So thank you.
I like the fact that you have a sky red shirt on, by the way.
Make sure I was dressed.
Dress the part.
Looking for somebody with a Lehigh shirt to stand up there.
But she's not even in our.
I know.
So.
I'm impressed.
Uh, Max Simms, Lehigh in the Chappa Valley area. Um, I also stand in support of the interlocal agreement. You know, as we look at. As we make, you know, federal, state, county, city. I don't think there's anything that's probably more locally applicable than education. And so I think this. And so I think this strive to bring more local voice, more local control to where when we make decisions about education, it is more applicable to the community that we're around. And so I think this interlocal bringing in the size of our our district, Alpine School District being the largest district in the state, this will still be a large district. It'll it'll be still in the top ten. I've heard some counter arguments that we're going to miss out on some economies of scale. There's lots of districts that that do very well in the size of district we're going to be coming. In fact, there's actually been some studies that have shown when you get too big, you start losing efficiency because of the bureaucracy and the extra red tape that come into play with really large organizations. So I think the combination of that. I've also heard there's some concern amongst teachers. My wife is a school teacher. I get this. That, you know, they're not going to have the same benefits or the same salaries, or they're gonna, somehow they're going to lose out because these are smaller districts. This actually is is actually the opposite. With more districts, that means there's more employers competing for you as an employee, as a resource available in the market of jobs. You have more more employers coming after you, wanting you to work for them. So I think this is actually going to be a net benefit for teachers. They will probably likely see their salaries going up because of that additional competition in the market. I I can't see that, you know, from a benefit standpoint, there's really going to be a loss there. They're still going to be participating in the same benefits organizations that are used statewide, the statewide, you know, retirement systems and other benefits that are typically pooled statewide anyway. So I I think this is going to be a net positive for our community. I think it's going to be a net positive for our students. With the results of this, as I've been looking at the maps and how districting might turn out in a new central district, Lehigh will probably have at least three, maybe three and a half to four seats in that new configuration. That'll be great for Lehigh. And and I think this is going to be a great benefit for education in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we take any more comment, can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
Last time, I think it's pretty clear with Mac and Julie where they stand, but there is a distinction between supporting that going on the ballot and supporting the split. And so maybe as people come up, if they wouldn't mind sharing, one, do they support it going on the ballot? And two, if it were to be on the ballot, would they support the split?
Good catch. Yeah, we received.
And if you don't feel comfortable saying whether, you know, which way you're on it, that's just like voting it to your private business, but I think that would be insightful for us.
Actually, we're not going to twist your arms saying anything you're uncomfortable saying.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's a good catch. We, I have gotten some comments, as you guys have as well, that a lot of people don't understand the distinction that our our vote here is just to put it on the ballot or not. So that's really what this meeting is about. But we are, do have an interest of those who are interested in seeing or not seeing the split. So other comments.
Hi, I'm John Madsen. I live up by Sky Ridge. I have kids in elementary at Belmont and Viewpoint and Sky Ridge and have had kids going through the whole system. I've loved Alpine School District, to be honest, and I've loved the local schools. I am in favor of putting it on the ballot, and I'm in favor of a split. One of the things that is just glaring to me is that this area of Utah County, this area of the Wasatch Front still has a lot of room to grow and expand, and it will. And there are different communities in Alpine School District, and I like the notion of going more local because it facilitates things more for Lehigh and this area, because we're going to experience a lot of growth. And so if we go local, we're going to get bigger anyway. And I I think that would be beneficial because I do believe, and I came from back east where there was a school district that was nearly a billion dollar a year annual budget, and it's just too much. It's a lot. And I I think going local just makes things more manageable, which I think is better for the children, better for the teachers, and better for the community. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Joy Lynn Lincoln, and I live in Saratoga Springs, but my children attended school at Meadow Elementary, or Snow Springs Elementary, and Willow Creek. That makes you see that I've been a longtime resident for the area. I just wanted to speak that I have appreciated the collaboration that as I have served, and I am speaking for myself, but as I have served on the Alpine School District, the amount of collaboration that we've done with the city council, and I've appreciated that over the last eighteen months and that that networking. I also hear a lot of comments that this was a rushed decision or that the cities just jumped in at the last minute. And I want to tell you that I appreciate the the in-depth study that I know that you guys have done, that you have commissioned a a report to see if it's feasible, but even before that, you were looking at data, and you have spent hours and hours and hours looking at data, that this is not just a get up Monday morning decision. And I appreciate the time that you have taken for that. That as you have looked at that data, you have looked at what's good for students in Lehigh today and what's good for students in Lehigh in twenty five years. And made sure that you don't shortchange the students of Lehigh by doing one thing when long term it's better for a different route. And so I really appreciate the time and the dedication that this council has taken to look at this as they're moving forward, and I am supportive of a reconfiguration.
Thank you.
I am not used to being on this. So I'm like, oh, wow, new perspective. Hi, I'm Emily Lockhart, and I live in Holbrook Farms. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I stand today in rise of the moving it to the ballot and allowing the residents to make this decision. I trust the people of Lehigh to make the decision that's best for them and their families, and this is such a large change that it really does come down to parents sitting in their home and evaluating their own life and decisions and thinking of their neighbors and really making this decision with their person and spouse and families in their home. So I support it being on the ballot. In addition to that, I also support the split. And there are many reasons, as stated by my dear friends in the room, of why it's a good idea. But I do want to caution that change is hard, and that while there are so many great data-driven reasons for doing this, we are people who fear change at our core, and sometimes it's really difficult to make these decisions and to navigate through them. So while this word of caution doesn't necessarily apply to this body tonight, I do caution that anyone who participates in the negotiations that happen between these new school districts thinks of not only their students, but of the students of all of Alpine School District. That when we part as a central, if we part as a central school district, that we remember that we've been sharing schools with Saratoga Springs students, and that their success is just as important as the success of Lehigh families and students. And so with that, I'm in support of it being on the ballot, and I also support the split. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I saw this on the agenda. That was the other reason why I wanted to come. I think this is a, first of all, I want to appreciate the council and the mayor putting together interlocal agreement. Just from the sideline, I think you guys have been working on it over the past couple of years, if not longer. And what, you know, when I moved here to Lehigh and found out our son was going to be in Alpine School District, I really wasn't that happy. I come from the mindset that as many of you know, I'm a civil engineer and I run projects. And a small budget versus a large budget. Sometimes the larger budget's easier to manage compared to a small budget as a project manager. And so I don't know why I'm saying that other than there's got to be accountability even on the Alpine School District if we stay Alpine School, as well as if we become our own school district and second. Oh. While while these other folks were talking, a thing came to mind. I hope that in the workings that when this happens. First of all, I support it going on the ballot. And then secondly, as I was saying, when, you know, in the workings of this and the hiring of, let's say, the superintendent. This will be a pretty major job for that individual. And I, when I see job advertisements for public servants and they're looking outside of the state, that irritates me. Because we have qualified people here in Utah. I mean, we have grown, we're mature, and when I see other school districts hire out of state, you know, yeah, that opens up your hiring pool. And maybe you'll have to do that. I don't know, because I've been in the hiring position myself, and it's hard to find good folks and I would say, think local within Utah as far as superintendent and other leaders. And what these folks also think about the teachers and and also the the kids. So on both sides after the split, ours is, you know, our school district and the other side. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Stacy Bateman. I have lived in Lehigh for over a decade, and I cover most of Lehigh on the Alpine District Board of Education. And I wanted to share a few things with the public as I address to you that I think maybe everybody is not aware of. And that is that my relationship with council members Albrecht Hancock and Condi go back over a decade. And so we have a lot of time invested talking about what the needs are in our city and how we can best support residents. Heather and I also have a a long relationship, and she's been a great thinking partner to me. And so for years, we have talked about the monthly enrollment report, the annual comprehensive financial report. These are regular conversations. And so I'm not sure that everybody knows all the work that you have invested. Michelle, I've been impressed with the way you've jumped in. Our relationship doesn't go back quite as far, but there's just really been a lot of time that you have all invested in this, into knowing the the data, the numbers, what the challenges are. Mayor, I know this was not your first choice, but I will publicly say till the end of my days that I'm grateful for your leadership, for your willingness to to jump into this and to give our residents an option that is best for them. So thank you for that. I appreciate that you all have the background to have the context and the knowledge as you approach what to put on the ballot. Your level of involvement tells me that you care about our people and not just the students and employees in Lehigh, but across the district. And I do believe that this the interlocal agreements are what is best across the board, as it will allow us to better meet needs. Our patrons have told us repeatedly that they would be more invested or more likely to support things if they were closer to home. And I think this configuration gives us that option. Also, thank you to Jason and to Marlin. I think Lehigh staff is incredible. I appreciate your time on this. I know that none of you signed on to do education when you ran to do this job or were hired to do this job, and so appreciate the investment there. Thank you for taking the time to research this. Thank you for considering what the what the impact is to our residents. We have a lot of unique needs here that I think we're going to be able to better meet. So to be clear, I absolutely support putting this interlocal agreement on the ballot, and I also support. I hope that people will vote for this, and I think it will be what we need to move forward and help our our area as we move into the next hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of people here. I'd like to hear from the ones who haven't spoke yet.
Hi, my name is Lisa Cook. I live in the Cold Spring Ranch community on the west side of Lehigh. We moved in about four years ago. We've got a four and a half year old or five and a half year old and a six and a half year old. So I have a former kindergartner at North Point and a future kindergartner at North Point this year. They love North Point. We've been satisfied with Alpine School District. I think they do a great job for the size that we are. I am excited at the idea of splitting that district up because I do appreciate having more local control over how we're funding our children's education. I am concerned about the interlocal that we have entered just because I do live on the west side of Lehigh, which is primarily the largest area of growth. I think not only for Lehigh, but probably for the entire interlocal. And it is a concern of mine that if we enter into a district, the central district that's proposed, the west side of Lehigh will not be able to secure funding for the growth that we will need over the next ten to twenty years. That's been a challenge with Alpine School District, obviously, because it's so large and we have so much need on the west side, including Saratoga Springs and Eagle Mountain. And I'm concerned that we are going to have the same issue in the central district as proposed on a smaller scale. So I am concerned that when we vote for bonds and things, there will be enough people from parts of our district that don't have growth that will be looking at the tax implications and thinking, eh, I don't want to invest in new schools. I don't have kids that are going to a school that is overcrowded. I don't see the need for that. I mentioned I moved in four years ago at the start of the community they're building out there. I've watched all the housing build up around us. We expected that when we moved in. We did intentionally choose our plot. It is across the street from a proposed elementary school that has been sitting there for four years, has not been allocated any funding. And I'm concerned that if we enter into this, when is that funding going to be approved? There are over a thousand households in my community alone, and that doesn't count Gardner Point and some of the other communities that are also being built at the same time. And I just worry, where are all those children going to go? So I am in favor of a split. I don't know that I am comfortable with the way we have the interlocal that we have entered into and the proposed district boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close, bring this to a close if nobody else wants to get up to speak. Okay. Going to bring it back up here, counsel. Counsel. I'm just going to make a quick comment because Stacy referred to this. Her and I have had a number of conversations about my placement here. I actually started in conversations. It's probably been about ten, twelve years ago, when John Dougal called me once and wanted to go to lunch, and that was probably the first conversation that I had in regards to splitting the Alpine School District. And lucky I'm making something smaller, and that was a bit concerning to me, but I I like the idea. But through the years and through a number of conversations, I had kind of focused on my position. I don't want to get involved in any other subdivision of the state because Lehigh City is the subdivision I prefer to focus on and never wanted to be involved in this. However, there became a time that it was kind of unavoidable. And and yeah, I just didn't want to tell anybody else how to run their subdivision because I didn't want them coming in here and telling me how to run mine. And but we kind of reached a tipping point after the last bond election and the way that went, that there were some numbers that were that were pretty concerning. And we had to have a discussion, and I'm pleased the fact that it's going to the people. So the people are the ones who actually get to make this make this decision. I think that's very important. So that's all I have to say on this at this point. I don't know, counsel, if anybody else would like to say something.
Why should I speak or not? Would it be appropriate to address some of the things that were brought up?
Sure.
Tell me to stop if I go too far. Appreciate all the the issues that were brought up, the concerns, the support. And I said in the last meeting, I'm going to say it again, we need to hear all sides of this. The public needs to hear all sides of this because ultimately if the interlocal cities agree to put it on a ballot, you'll be making the final choice. So these discussions, I think, are just helpful for everybody. It was brought up about the superintendent. Just wanted, good points, but clarify, we we're not going to do that hiring, the school board members that you elect. The school board members that you elect, if this goes through to the end, will make that decision. The caution about change is well taken also. Change is scary, I think, especially for the employees. And I appreciate the work that our school board members have been doing to address some of those concerns. They know more about that than I ever want to know. And the concern about the configuration, that was something we considered. We, we looked at a lot of options. We looked at Lehigh only, we looked at going to, with the west, with the east, staying with the entire east side. We have put a lot of thought into this, and that is a concern that, I can't remember who brought it up, but that maybe we would have the same issue just on a smaller scale. That's something we've thought about because we, Lehigh still is growing. Are the other cities going to want to fund our growth? But I, you know, we hashed this out, some of the council members, we've talked about that. And if we had stayed with the west side, it would be this, kind of the same situation. Their needs would be greater than ours, so they would get the funding and we might not get it. So there are the challenges ahead, but we're hoping that this is the best. And we thought, like I said, I've thought through quite, for a long time. And we feel like this is the best configuration. And that's why we wanted to consider taking it to Lehigh voters, then you guys get to finally decide. But again, just appreciate you guys coming out, taking your time, sitting through the boring meetings, you know, to the end, to bring up these, these concerns. And I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion even after the public comment period's over. But thank you for coming.
Ms. Mayor, I've got a few comments if that's okay. And I think they'll address some of it. So like Michelle said, as a council, we've been diving deep into this for quite some time. Long before MGT was done with their study, we were engaging on kind of trying to figure out what was going on. And then from the MGT study release, I mean, it was just like, okay, I thought I was elected to the city council. And here I am diving into this stuff. So I just want to share kind of my main reasons for, one, why I support the school district split, but also why this specific configuration. So one of them, which came to mind really in the last couple of months, that the school bond, when it failed the last time, it kind of, you know, before ASD, I felt the same way. ASD has always been well-run. My four kids graduated from Skyridge High School at one point. All four were attending it because I've got a set of twins. So I think that's kind of unique, that they were all four there at the same time. I've always loved ASD. But we, when that bond passed, my concern was that bonds would never be able to pass again. And so one of the things that this does is it allows the three different districts that are proposed, essentially from the two interlocals and then the east, which would be, would be its own school district, all have unique needs. I look at the east, which is, they have a declining student population. They have elementary schools that have, you know, five, 450, 500 kids. If that's what they want to do, that's fine, but let their taxpayers decide that they want to maintain those schools. Here in the central, we have modest to stable growth. And so in some areas, there's not a lot of growth. In other areas like Lehigh and American Fork, we still have some growth coming, although it's not to the explosive nature that we have in the west, which is the west's very unique. And like, I mean, it's, I can't even imagine what it would be like to be out there because it's just, they're going through a lot. And they have two cities that are growing at the same pace that Lehigh was 10 years ago. And so they've got a lot to deal with. When I look at, you know, the cities that are part of this interlocal, you've got a small bit of Draper, the Utah County part of Draper, you've got Alpine, American Fork, Cedar Hills, Highland and Lehigh. And if I think about bond passage, the two cities that have growth, that we would absolutely need to support this. And by the way, historically, even though Alpine, Cedar Hills and Highland haven't had a lot of needs, they've actually been very supportive of bonds. But I look at Lehigh and American Fork, and Lehigh, from a voter perspective, accounts for 47% of the registered voters. American Fork accounts for 23% of the registered voters. So when you think about bond passage, it has to pass across the entire school district. You've got nearly 75% of the registered voters in the two areas that have needs and have growth. To Michelle's point, you know, if we were with the west, while there are some needs, where you were talking, Lisa, their needs are so astronomical, like it would be like, okay, cool, we'll just put a couple more trailers on, you know, your elementary school. I think we have a unique opportunity with this configuration actually address needs across the entire district. So that's one. The other that came to the forefront for me was representation. And first of all, I want to thank the three school board members that came here to speak. Julie, Joy Lynn and Stacy are phenomenal. And they have been incredible partners with the city. And they've been incredible advocates through this entire process to brainstorm, bounce ideas off of, think through things, educate me on things that I wasn't aware of. Because again, I'm a city council member. I don't, I don't think through school things, or that wasn't my initial job. But currently, we essentially have one and a half school board members, even though we have nearly a third of the student population in Alpine School District. And Stacy has been phenomenal, Joy Lynn representing the other, the west side of Lehigh or a portion of Lehigh has been phenomenal. But we continually have been outvoted by the board members in the east. And when you think about a bond, and this is where the representation comes into play, the school board determines what projects are placed on that bond. And bond is kind of gamesmanship in a way. And so, hey, you need a new high school in Eagle Mountain, cool, but we need Orem to vote for this too. So we're going to do some seismic upgrades on a school that only has 450 kids. And we're going to spend $20 million on seismic upgrades when an elementary school in Cedar, you know, in Saratoga Springs might cost $30 million. But we're going to do these seismic upgrades on the little school because we need the voters in Orem to feel like they've got something. And that's been going on for decades, and it's worked. I don't see it working anymore. And so this, and it was mentioned, I think Mac mentioned kind of the representation shift. With option four, the thing that I like about this too is it's not only just representation, but the representation is tied to student population. So the number of students in option four in Lehigh are 54%, and the number of registered voters is 47%. So you have pretty tight alignment as far as those that are paying the taxes that absolutely should have a say on what their taxes are compared to the students that they're representing, so to speak. And so to me, that was one of the big things that drove me to this. And we'll have roughly three to three and a half board members kind of into perpetuity because we're growing, American Fork is growing. And so I don't see us ever being in a spot where we're the dominant force, which I don't want us to be. If I wanted us to be that, I'd say, hey, let's do a Lehigh-only district, but that doesn't make sense. On that point, that actually brings me to my third point, which is school district size. It was addressed kind of the economies of scale and large districts. Again, I've never thought that Alpine School District was too big until bonds couldn't be passed. With the change in school districts, the three proposed school districts, you'd have two school districts in the state that are both over, well, we'll call it three. You've got Davis at 73,000, you've got Granite at 61,000, and you've got Jordan at 59,000. So you've got, those are the top three school districts in the state. After that, you've got Washington County, you've got 37,000 there, you've got Nebo, 37,000. The central school district would be the sixth largest district in the state, despite the fact that we've been splintered into three. The east district would start as the ninth largest. And I believe the west would start as the 10th, and they'd probably be the first within like a two years, the way they're growing. It's facetious, but not entirely. Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, you're going to have three very large districts that can manage things and be a really well-run district and again, provide that local control. The last one was taxes. Taxes is on everyone's mind. And the thing that I, that I really appreciated about the LRB study, which was our follow-ons, the MGT study, was in looking at the capital project needs. The analysis showed that a central school district, while taxes are going to be going up. If anyone says taxes are not going up, they're just, they're just up at night. There are going to be tax increases, but there are also tax increases if we stay ASD. The thing that stood out to me with the LRB study is that as central district, our taxes will actually go up less, but we'll have more representation, we'll be able to meet our unique and specific needs. And so for me, those three things combined really kind of provide the sweet spot. The one thing that I'll comment on, those are kind of my four primary reasons why, not only do I want it on the ballot, but I will be fully supporting it as an individual to get it passed. Post-passage, let's assume it passes, it is so critical that the first thing we do is elect really phenomenal school board members. Because as Michelle pointed out, they're going to be the ones that elect, or elect,
Choose.
Choose, hire the superintendent. They're going to be the ones that are making the decisions on which schools get put where and whatnot. And so, you know, when this passes in November, which I truly believe it, it is the best thing not only for Lehigh, but for the entire interlocal, as well as the entire district. That is, I think, just a paramount thing for us to think through is let's make sure we get some phenomenal school board members, just like we've had representatives in our area to this point. And that's all I've got.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, so Paul covered a lot of it and a lot of the, we've been hashing over for the past several months. One of the big things, and he touched on that, but one thing that's been brought up with me is that you only care about the finances. And to me, the finances are probably the most critical thing about what impacts our students, our teachers, what's in the classroom, the size of the classroom. And so that, knowing that we would be in a district that would have the less tax implications, so we could use that money to go directly towards helping within the classroom, helping to keep the teachers at the same pay, the same benefits or better, that's really important to me. I care deeply about our students, about our teachers. People closest to me in my life are teachers, and I'm grateful for that and the insights that they've given to me on this. The thing that we're facing right now is that the west has motivation and support to leave. So to me, as much as we talk about the possibility of staying together, yes, I think that we could stay together and we continue, could continue to make this work until we're one of the great big mega districts, if we are not already considered that already. And, but with the west and their needs, it makes a lot of sense to me that that is something that's going to happen. And I'm excited for what they're going to be able to do because of that. And so as we look at that, it's really a matter of, do we want to do a two or a three-way split? It doesn't even seem that there are no other options than that. And because of that, and the studies that we've had from the LRB to the MGT to the proponents against Orem Prop II, to the district's own studies, have shown us that the deficit within the south starts at 21 million a year. And that's a deficit we do not share. We are balanced in central, but the south has a 21 million a year deficit. And that is a problem that is not brought up very often. It's definitely a problem that I have not heard a solution to. So is if we're looking to, if we do not split off into our own district, that is a problem that we're going to have to solve of how we're going to support the $21 million a year deficit in the south that will grow to 31 million by year five. And we can do that a few ways. We can close schools to be able to balance our central area with the east area. The east area in the south, we need to close three more elementary schools, a junior high and a high school to be able to match where we're at right now. As we're closing our schools, we would need to look at closing schools in Lehigh, Cedar Hills and American Fork to be able to match what those closures are. So we could do closed schools. We could also raise taxes. We could raise taxes in the north, then we could send that money outside of our district to be able to fund the deficit that's in the south. And as we do that, the big concern comes as we are sending money that does not go to benefit our residents in our schools and go out. Does that mean, what are we taking that fund from? Are we able to raise the taxes to that amount to be able to fund a deficit that is not ours? And so as we would go back forth and battle this, as we're seeing with the school board now and the split votes that they have, and the residents involved and trying to determine how we would solve this deficit, whether it's a combination of raising taxes, closing schools, where's, who's the least common denominator who's going to get affected by that? And it's going to be the, those who have no say in the matter. It's going to affect our students, it's going to affect our teachers, it's going to affect the ones who have the least amount of say and choice in what happens. And so instead of funding teachers and programs, we're going to fund buildings. And that's a decision that we're going to have to make, that how important is it for us to stay together and the impact that that would have on what needs to be done just to be able to balance that deficit that we have. So that's my biggest concern because we saw this happen. We saw it happen with Jordan. We saw what happens when there's excess spending, and they froze teacher salaries for five years. Then at closed schools, they, they took it from the least amount of those who could fight back. And so if we want to stay together, and I know there's a lot of people that do, that's the problem that I need to have the answer to. Thank you.
Are you taking a shot at Paige? You might as well.
Chris is still out there somewhere.
We heard from Chris last, last public hearing. I haven't made, yeah, I didn't make anybody else go down the podium.
Well, and I have enormous respect for my colleagues up here because as this process has moved on, everyone has shown enormous restraint while we collected the data. And our decisions have evolved over time. What we, what I originally went into it thinking would probably be the best option. My opinion changed as we took in the different information that was out there. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, the financial, and I agree with Heather that that's a huge component. But I would also say, I understand the concerns of the teachers and the parents and the students. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that I'm the only one up here who has been a teacher. I taught special education for Alpine School District. So I'm heavily invested in what it's like to be a teacher, but also in what it's like to have students who need to access special services that have been talked about a lot in terms of economies of scale and what will be preserved and what we can still offer. But what eventually persuaded me that an interlocal would be necessary was when I saw what went down, not for Lehigh students, but for those in Saratoga concerning the possibility of a new high school. The daily conditions that those students and those teachers are facing, in my opinion, is unconscionable to shoot down the options for those kids just to make a bond more palatable to other people. And a lack of representation and a lack of, for want of a better term, equity in terms of spending and needs of students, I believe, has outgrown the abilities of Alpine School District to address those. And that's what ultimately persuaded me, not conditions for my own kids, although we certainly have challenges, but because of what kids in another community were facing. And that was hugely important to me. So the kids have definitely not taken a backseat on the bus in this process. They are up front and center, and so are the teachers. And I believe in my heart that they will all be better served by the option of putting it on the ballot. And personally for myself, the option of creating a central school district, which I'm in favor of. I would also like to commend everyone who's come here, both at this public hearing, at the other, at the many school board meetings I've listened to, at the community meetings I've attended. I have been incredibly impressed with the respect shown by people who have differing opinions, but who have been willing to come to the table and address them and talk about them. Also enormous respect for our school board representatives because I cannot imagine what a wild ride they have been on for the last couple of months. I've had just a tiny little taste of it, and I don't know when you sleep because you always seem to be up. But I, I appreciate all of you who came here to speak tonight. I look forward to seeing this process move forward, and thank you to everyone who's taken part in it.
Thank you, Paige. And let's bring it back up here. There's nothing to vote on here. We've had the public hearing, and I, like I mentioned, do appreciate all those that commented. There's some here that didn't speak. If you don't mind, just by the show of hands, how many would like to see this? Go to the vote, the people, just. Okay? I think that's where we're going to be making our decision, or the council will be. And I think you've heard their, their positions tonight. So thank you very much for coming, all of you, on this issue. That being said, we got item number 11, which is our adjournment. Would someone like to make a motion on that?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chris, are you still on?
Yeah, aye.
Okay.
Slow down.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Sometimes we're efficient. It's rare, but.
Thank you for coming.
All right.
If we get a local teacher.
Teaching it's very, it's very.
What do we know the older?
He was gonna, I think they're just late. They, they think that the, I told them like this was going to go fast.
Well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But there's still work to do.
Yeah. No, he, this is how it should always been said. Yeah.
Possible. But kind of funny when it lets you see. So, yeah, so that's a good place to start. Let's see, yeah, you can ask if there needs to be an obstruction served. Yeah, and there's, you know, if there, if the people that look at it have been thinking. Yeah, I think it's like.
You know how like.
The difference in fact. The people were like, oh. If, if I go.
Yeah, yeah, they should, yeah, they should be most heavy at least. I, I don't know, but if they sent, I'll be that advice on anything like this, it's a matter of his.
So this.
What's that?
These guys are staying.
So that's why we're like.
The structure is.
That's where we're with.
We came and we're like, wow, right here.
They're bad.
I guess we'll talk.
Hey, they really haven't done, that was our thing, is we don't want them to spend a lot of money.
Yes, we should, we should talk to the.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter. I think we just.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, Peter.
I think we just.